Called for this special meeting of the associate council being there is a quorum present. Turn it over to Mr. Weeks.
Mayor members, council and the public, kind of give you some history about why we're here today. So as many of you know, our Navasota Community Center, the actual swimming pool and Brewley Park is an area that our swimming pool has had quite a bit of issues over the last couple of years trying to get it up and going, continue running. Again, this weekend, we had some electrical issues. Last week, we had one of our pool pump issues. We had to order some more. So we continue to have issues with the swimming pool. During last budget season, we came to council and explained to council that over this next fiscal year, we needed to come up with a plan of what we're going to do with that entire area. In addition to that, we met with our parks board. We do have one parks board member here tonight or today with us and talked to them about what the next steps were for our entire park system. The recommendation that staff provided to the parks board and to council was let's focus on this one whole block area first and then look at a master plan for the entire park system. We've got a lot of great opportunities within our parks and need to start programming some maintenance dollars toward that as well as revitalizing our parks. And the main purpose, we wanted to start with this, what we call this entire block, is due to the swimming pool. The use of the Navasota Center gets a lot of usage. And so we reached out to several consultants that could assist us in a feasibility study to look at what this possible area could include. And so we, staff brought Burditt to you. Burditt is a rental company in the parks industry and they've actually done work for the city on numerous occasions. And so we hired them to conduct this feasibility study. And today is what we call the kickoff session. So this is just a kickoff so that Burditt and their staff, along with the parks and council can have an opportunity to ask questions. Burditt will actually go over the project purpose and scope of work of what they've been hired and talk to you about a timeline. As part of this process, we will include community engagement. That'll be programmed somewhere within the process. It's not, today is not where we're, that's designed for. Today is just mainly for council and the parks board to have those conversations and it's an open meeting because we do have a quorum and wanted to make sure that you have your opportunity to have discussions with Burditt and then we have all these conversations to see where we're moving forward with the scope. And then we'll work with Burditt about how and how, how the process for the community engagement will occur. We have flash vote as a way that we do some surveys. We also want to be able to have some one-on-ones, whether Burditt's part of it or if it's just staff within the community, that'll be part of the process as well. So today, I'm going to introduce to you Charles Burditt. He's president of Burditt and so let him take over from here.
Thank you, Jason. Do I need to turn this on?
Nope, it's all, it's all good.
Well, thank you, Jason and council members and mayor and Michael with the parks board. Do we have any other parks board members out in the audience? So, and ISD folks?
I don't think so.
Well, if they come in, we'll kind of go from there. This is always an exciting time for us. Once you scope out a project and you kind of get the feel for what the expectations are to really hear more from city elected officials, but also from staff. And I hope staff, I hope it'll be okay for staff to engage in this discussion as well because they're on the day-to-day trenches with, along with you guys. So in terms of kickoff, I want to introduce our team. Kevin Maric over here is one of our project managers, architectural project managers. And Dale Clark here is our regional landscape architecture director out of our Bryan office. Mark Goulis is director of design for our firm. And I do want to say that we have two Texas A&amp;M students going into their third year of architecture that are interns this summer. Summer I have Camilla and Sophie there on the second row behind you. And they're going to be taking notes and you probably will see them some this summer as we have public engagement and just they're kind of learning the ropes and I think they'll be very valuable. They're great renderers and will be participating throughout the project. So to start with, just a little bit of background for this. We did meet back in March. We had the opportunity to tour the community center. I will say that like Mr. Week said, we have worked for the city before. We've worked on parks master plans. We've done public meetings in the community center, so pretty familiar with it. It looks a lot like it did 10, 12 years ago, although there are a few, a few little places where it's starting to get a little tired and there's some questions about perhaps the ceiling, the roof membrane and you can't tell really what's under those ceiling tiles until you get in there and check them out some. But the renovation or considering what to do with the community center is mostly about what renovations, floor plan changes, how you would invest your money, the best way you can invest any kind of resources into that facility. And it definitely will be here for quite some time. And so we'll want to know how it's being used, what kind of meeting spaces you require, whether renovations to the kitchen and the cook area, refrigeration units, all that. Also understand the HVAC systems and what kind of issues you are experiencing with HVAC. I think more of the challenging part of this is the pool house. The pool house, we looked at together with staff and the pool house goes back a long time. I don't think most of us were around during that time period when it was constructed, but it's reminiscent of all the old CCC construction from the 30s where stone. And if you go out to August Horse Park, you see a lot of that stone construction out there and it's really, it's something that harkens back to a whole different time period and probably, you know, it has a lot of historical value. At the same time, when you're doing, when you're operating a facility and you're trying to keep it going, there is a point where you either retire that, that facility and raise it or you renovate it. And sometimes it can cost the same amount of money to renovate a facility as it does to build a brand-new one. But that being said, we see, we do see potential in that facility, but we want to understand and we're going to ask questions of you about the community center. We're going to ask questions about the pool house. I know it's being utilized upstairs, but downstairs is, that was long ago abandoned services to that. There is some cracks in the side brick and all, but so we'll also talk about that and whether it can be renovated. And also in the, in the plaza, you have a great plaza space that has a lot of opportunity for spillover and for shade in there and to make it a gathering spot. It already can be. The question is, can you, can you incentivize or make it an amenity to where people want to be there? And that, I think shade is one of the most important things there. Then the pool, we understand that there's, that water leakage and supplying water has been difficulty and there are issues there. And so considering whether, and I think this is probably the biggest question beyond the pool house is what to do with the pool? To continue providing pool services for the community or whether to turn it into some other amenity? And that's where we want to get some feedback from you. And what are those costs associated with that? And we will be going through rigorous opinions of probable cost for all three of these elements. And then last of all, the little play area there at Brewley Park stays wet down in there. Know that there's, there's concern and also a mystery somewhat of where that water comes from and, but it stays wet down in there. And what kind of renovations could be possible there? And also at the kind of northeast side of the pool, that green space along the street there on the northeast side. The last part of this is the treat area where all those beautiful pecans are and whether or not that is expansion space or whether that becomes, or whether it stays green space because shade is, is really important, particularly the last two summers. We see 106, 108 degree temperatures. It's hard to, it's hard to replace canopy in there, all those shade sails and other structures might, might, would go in there. So that's the, that's the project study area. What we're going to be doing is we're going to go through programming that will start today. And programming is just what do you, what do you desire? What are your needs? What are the financial issues? What are the problem areas you're having? What does the community want that you perceive them to want? You already know a lot of the things that should be done, that could be done, but oftentimes the community will surprise you and have other ideas about what they'd like to see done. And it usually becomes a marriage of those things and you know, you're always battling the balance between cost and amenities that you provide. We'll develop this, this program and that really becomes the, the programming sessions become what we call a problem statement. And through that problem statement, we develop facts, goals, concepts and needs organized against the economy and time, a variety of components. And we'll develop that and at the end of that study from the input, and that includes public engagement, we will determine, okay, here's, here's what needs to be done and this is our recommendation. And then as we go forward, we will do pre-schematics and floor plans and conceptual designs. Those pre-schematics will end up being rendered out in such a way that you can visualize them and then we'll also have opinions of probable costs and a final recommendation. And as with any feasibility study or master plan, and we will master plan the site altogether, but there'll be alternate concepts. But with any master plan, it's just a plan and it's just a study. And at the end of the day, you may say, yes, we know this, but this is what we have to do or this is what we can do now. And we'll also provide a phased approach to it perhaps and you can set your priorities for that. So the official scope of work is on your agenda item there where we'll assess facilities, confirm design intentions, formalize the program, public engagement, and it goes on through conceptual design, the site plan, pre-schematic, OPCs or opinion of cost and the final study report. And so that's pretty much the, the process that we'll go through over the next many months. The public engagement, we will get together with staff to outline what dates are advisable for, given the summer and it's a great time to do it and then sometimes it's not because people are traveling and on vacation. But we will do an online survey. We'll also have public engagement and those facts and items will be included. I've got a couple of documents that will circulate kind of towards the end of this to give you an example of some of projects that we've done that are feasibility studies and you'll get a little, little bit better look at that. And so what we want to start by doing is just having a conversation. While this is a public forum today and an official, special meeting, if we could keep it, if we could make it conversational and just Q and A and then you guys interrupt us anytime you want to or have staff chime in as well, we'll throw out some questions for you to begin with and let you go from there. And that may take a little while. I think that we're going to pass out some cards to you and maybe have a one-minute pause or two-minute pause and say, please write down your three top interests in, in this project or what to do over there. It could be what you want to see. It could be what your concerns are. It could be anything you want to write down that is a priority. It could be parking. It could be, you know, keeping swimming in the community. It could be having a indoor, you know, workout area, gymnasium, you name it. But once we do that, we, we'd like to go through and have each of you tell us what those things mean. You know, you've written them down, but maybe you could elaborate a little bit. I understand that, that you may not be ready to share what's, what's going on inside because you're waiting for us to tell you certain things that we hear from the community. But perhaps parks board can speak on behalf of the parks board and some of the things as well and then staff as well. So there. We've got some, we've got big cards because I know you guys need to be able to see it better. Just like me. So it's only 9:00. Just take a minute and write down three things that, that are your priorities out of this study. Maybe that's a better way to say it. So once we finish, I'm going to turn, once y'all are finished, I'm going to turn over to Mark Goulis. Mark is our director of, he's over architecture and landscape architecture. He's over all design services and very accomplished architect and we're going to be led by him through this project, although we will have architecture and landscape architecture represented underneath his, his. And. And we will probably pop up and down to get back over here to the mic to, you know, throw in something. It could be that Kevin or it could be Dale as well. And Kevin can come up here too and join some of these people. Charles mentioned is ultimately doing, we're doing a feasibility, feasibility study and master plan. And basically what that is, the way we perceive it as, as architects, we're basically going to get information and y'all are going to tell us a story of what y'all think it should be and what it could be. And we have to try, try to interpret how to make that into a facility that will work for the community and as well as the mayor and everybody else on the council. It's actually an exciting time for us on projects like this because it's like, it's a mystery. We don't know what we're going to hear. We don't know what we're going to see, but once we start gathering all the information, we get excited about it as architects because we can do some neat stuff with landscape. We can do stuff with architecture. We can do stuff with all kinds of components that make it worth visiting the space for the community and for everybody else around here. So we love doing these studies and we're, actually we're pretty good on it because we've done a lot of them and we know the sequence it needs to take to make it happen in the best way. I know Charles talked about the general scope of work and I was just kind of, kind of going to reassess what those are. The first is assessment of facilities. Basically, we're going to go out there, not only look at the buildings and the utilities and everything else with the buildings themselves, but at the land and the topography and anything else that we can do from a landscape standpoint to make it a complete facility. I mean, we, as architects, we love to look at it from all aspects and it's just not the building, it's just not the landscape, but it's all together. Our firm is, has so many architects and landscape, we work together as a team. It's not separated. We're, so it all comes out and we all work together and we, we'll do a design, we'll do a layout, we'll put on the lathe mator and we'll decide which is best. But we're all team players and we love to, love to get the best result and that's by communicating with each other and working collaborative with each other. So that said, so is the community. Y'all's input is, is the key to our success. We have to know, we have to hear, we have to understand what y'all want for the, for the facility itself because we can make our assumptions, but it doesn't tie unless the community's tied with it. So those are the things that we're going to be working towards initially through doing the assessment. Now we'll do the reading with, meeting different people, but the assessment is the key at the beginning. Confirmed design intentions and confirmed preliminary programming. Basically, what from the meetings we have will figure out what we need and what we want to, for the facility, but also the landscape and also any other park-type settings we want in the facility itself. Formalize a program, city staff and election officials, et cetera. That, that basically saying is, once we gather everything, we're going to program from, our brains as architects and landscape architects, as soon as we walked out to that site, our brains were growing, rolling. We got all kinds of ideas in our brain. Now we've got to pull it together so we can program it to tie it, tie it with the community and everybody else to be the best facility. The next thing is public engagement. That, that's kind of neat because we do different, different pop-ups and different programs to make that happen, surveys, but that, you'd be surprised how informative that can be for what these facilities want to be. Through our experience over the years, it tells us more pinpoint when somebody can say it behind the scenes that they're not, they're shy, too shy to talk about up front. It helps us understand some of the things that may come in play. Then we'll basically create conceptual designs where the building, the landscape, everything else kind of ties together. Then the site plan is always important for access, how we, the parking, the facilities itself, how you use the facility and how you approach it between the two buildings. In this case, we've got the community center, we've got the pool facility, we've got the plaza between. So how all, all those tie together with access to the facilities and form them together. We may come up with some other ideas when we get here, ideas from everybody that, you know, maybe we have an amphitheater or maybe have, who knows what? Because you have that slope and that topography gives you something, a new opportunity to explore. So those are the kind of things that we will talk, look at from a landscape standpoint, architecture standpoint, that might add some energy or synergy to, to the project itself. Then from there, we'll do some schematic design and renderings that tell, show the images of what our ideas are. Then develop opinion of probable cause. Basically, we can design the most beautiful thing, but if we can't afford it, we can't assess, assess the cost to do it, that, that may limit how we can approach it. It may be phased, it may be directed in different ways, but it'll, it'll work together as a team, as together. And then we put the, the, the final report together to assess everything. So that's just a general scope and we can break it, we'll break it down a little bit more as we go through the, how we, the programming stuff we have written down for y'all and I have in front of y'all. But right now, what I'd like to do is if each person kind of read their three items of what's important to them.
And I'm, I'm, we're going to share space up here. We're used to being across the table and back and forth, so we're just going to stand up here and we may get somebody else to come up. But let's start with Michael, with the parks board. Because he's a volunteer and he's serving and we appreciate what you do and no good deed goes unpunished, right? Of course, all of you guys are the same boat up here. So tell us what you've got on yours.
Well, again, one I wanted to be on this board from day one when I saw that they were taking, wanting folks to get involved from the public and stuff like that. I have 35 years in the landscape industry. That was my last gig. So I'm used to dealing with not just homes. I did, did deal with homes at the end of my career, large, high-end homes, Mark Cuban. One of the homes that actually wasn't home, it was this beachfront, beach house over on the west coast on a trans plant, $30 million home. I'm usually dealing with cities, municipals, dealing with parks and city properties, that type of stuff, also HOAs, large apartment complexes. I've had my own business for about 10 years and decided I've enough of this. I've got to be able to see my wife and kids occasionally and the daylight, the, or the nighttime. So my heart is in this and we love Navasota. I commend the mayor and Jason and the rest of the city council for getting this upfront. I think the public here deserves this. These are open spaces that help bring a community together, get people out of their homes where they're permitting. And that's what builds a community. This is a great, small community. I pray to God that it stays semi-small, but it needs to do these things for the public so they can get to know their neighbors, have a place to take their kids in the outdoor space. Again, my number one thing, my thing was prioritize in public spaces and that for me is parks and the concept of what that brings to your community. My number two issue, and not so much an issue, just putting it on the table, is the cost of budgeting for the much-needed improvements. You can drive around other communities and see that their parks are somewhere towards the top of the, the city's priority because they understand what it brings to a community. So in that same realm of budgeting and costs, which I know Jason is very good at, he's a God-sent to this community, where does the monies come from? How do you generate that budgeting money to really assess? This is a big part of a community, our direction and that whole program. My number three is, again, we've got a great marketing person here and promoting to the city and the community to support what this takes. A lot of people, they just want to go, oh my God, it's going to cost us as much money. Okay, but look at the benefits and what it brings to you, not just as self-serving to the community, but with the outside world. You know, one of the things that, again, it brought me and my wife to want to put roots down here aside from that we've got my grandchildren on Coliseum, a big factor on my wife's side. I was ready to go to the Pacific Northwest, you know, but we married you then and do that fudge thing. So was the fact of, again, what this brings to a community. I think it solidifies what a community is. It's not just a pretty place to come and eat at a restaurant or do a little bit of retail shopping or do your work or job here, but what it means to be part of a community. This helps bring people out and get to know their neighbors, mayors, city council folks. And I want to recommend, I want to thank Mayor Miller for his, it's a political thing, bringing our beloved governor and stuff to his establishment over here. It was an awesome amount. Anyway, I've said way too much already.
Well, you said, one of the important things, of course, is always funding and as, as that goes, the Parks and Recreation or Parks and Open Space Master Plan is your funding mechanism and usually that's the vehicle to which you get Texas Parks and Wildlife grants and trail grants are 80/20 match, whereas bigger infrastructure projects are 50/50. But talk a little bit about that in a little while. So thanks, Michael. Well, you were, you were finished, you were finished first, but.
I apologize for not being able to read. I can't even read if I was up close, but.
James here.
You were finished first. What, tell us.
Oh, you was watching that go, sir. But my thought is that if we're going to look into this, I would like to see it large enough and big enough to be a great family park. When I say family park, my number one deal is open green space. park, um, my number one deal is open green space, uh, that you can actually go out and take your family and, uh, have a real good time, or, you know, you can have a cookout or let the kids play and. My number two is the state of the art. Many times, the city have built things for the need of today and not for the future. If we're gonna build a park, we need to build it big enough, efficient enough, that people will come, people will use it, people will bring their family. Uh, I think this city hall is, it was built big enough, but just about to run out of space with it right now, but I don't know, uh, when you were talking about doing assessment here, is it five year, ten year, fifteen years, twenty years? The population grows, so we need to have this place large enough for ten, ten to fifteen years down the, uh, down the road.
Yeah, I think any kind of investment in renovation and all, there's, it's kinda like you, when you have a used car, you know, and you gotta make that decision if you're sending your daughter to college, or to, uh, wherever in that car or not, whether it's worth putting new tires and fixing all the things on it, or it's better just to get a lower mileage car. And, and with that facility, it's probably gonna be more important to look beyond ten years. I think any investment you make, short of HVAC, roof, some, some of the, uh, things that are not inexpensive, but, but not major, um, that's the decision you're gonna make, is if, if it's to be state-of-the-art and it's gonna serve the, the community, it should probably take care of something for the next twenty-five, I don't know how many years, um, then you might have a, some.
Well, you know, it's, it's, it's important to understand. A lot of times, there's costs that you don't see, like mechanical, electrical, those kinda things, that to bring them up to date, it costs a lot of money, a lot of money that you don't foresee. But, if you don't do it, you don't bring it up to the, to current codes, you don't bring it up to, to the current technology to help it be a better facility. So, those things, we'll, we'll study, we'll look at, and it'll be part of our feasibility study to analyze those components, as well as the things that you do see, which are the park, the buildings, the facilities, the, the, filling the air correct, being able to do wifi, whatever else we need to do for the park itself. Those kinda things we'll start, we'll take into consideration during the feasibility study. That'll be part of the aspect of us studying.
Okay, and, and my third one would be, uh, to listen to the people. Uh, this community belongs to the people. Uh, see what the people want in their community, and it may not be what we can get, but at least listen and, and place the meetings at time that everybody can come, and, and, uh, you may have to have one during the day and then one after six o'clock, when people can come and just voice their opinion. Uh, and, uh, those are my three.
That, that, that's, that's, in our hearts, that's number one. Uh, the community has to appreciate what we're doing. That's, that's what we, how we feel about when we do a feasibility study. I know there's a lot of other things that play into it, and a lot of politics that can roll into it, but the community is number one, whenever we do a feasibility study, to hear what they have to say, so we can try to implement what we can, and work with the, the city council to get to where we wanna be.
It's on you, Mayor.
Okay. Well, it's all about quality of life, and it's, it's, whether it's the folks that live here now, having the ability to, to have the, the amenities that, that, uh, they'd like to have, and then also attracting, uh, new folks, controlled, of course, to, you know, for what they would be able to have access to. And obviously, there's a lot of things that we're, that's gonna have to be looked at, and, and, uh, I just want, you know, everyone to know that, you know, there, there are wish lists, and there are, there's reality too, and, and of course, it's our tax dollars, and it's also the fact that parks are non, for the most part, non-revenue generating. So, that has to be, you know, obviously look into grants and other ways to help pay for the things. But, um, just on the personal side, I, I mean, I'd, I'd like to see us look at, you know, like a splash pad or something for that, that spot, especially with that plaza there. And, um, that could either, I mean, I wouldn't think it'd take the place of the pool, but I think the, the pool has, I think it continues to be something that everybody wants. Um, I don't think there's any less interest in that, and especially with, uh, the swim team, uh, uses that facility, and they also bring in at swim meets, lots of folks from out of town to, to visit Napa Sota. So, that, that should be, a part of it should be marketing, uh, to bring other folks here to, to use the facilities. Um, and I know, uh, it's, it's probably gonna be real shocking when we find out what it's either gonna, and once we hit it, figure out whether the pool's leaking, or, uh, we know it's leaking, but what it's gonna take to either fix it, or whether it would have to be rebuilt, or, I mean, there's just, there's some really big, big things that are, that are involved here.
Yeah, our initial study, our initial walkthrough stuff, we had some conversations saying that there's, that might be a challenge, but we're here to look through it, look at it, and figure out, help try to figure out.
And this is, this is the only, this is the only way to do it.
Yep.
And usually, when we're sitting around the table going through these things, and when, uh, we get the input, you know, whether it's five things or three things, we'll ask questions as we go, 'cause we kinda get lost in the line. So, if you don't mind me asking, do you know how many tournaments you have? How many students are utilizing the pool for swim?
There's somebody here that can probably comment to that.
If we can.
People in the community are using that.
It's, our Mud Cats coach is here, so I'll ask her to come up, give us that.
Yeah?
You can just shout it out.
Yeah, you shout it out, and I'll.
We have, uh, six to seven tournaments here. I'm not a swim team, I'm a swim team. Um, this year, we hosted three. We bring in, uh, Brian and College Station. So, you multiply that, grandparent, um, the larger team, one hundred, Brian. They're here for about, we're telling them, um, they, but here they're buying gas, here. Um, they're also going back to wherever they work.
Might also have a flat.
And so, that's gonna be difficult, I think, to capture and study. Not only here during the swimming, but as they're going back to the neighboring, neighboring locals who can easily, they, they hear, food teams, whatever we make. Where can we go eat from? I know they're coming in, they're coming in to shop. It's going to be, that's hard.
Yeah, and, and that's the good news and the bad news, because to monetize, to monetize visitors, you gotta get them overnight to, to fully really see, uh, the, the incremental gain, uh, that first level of, of revenue that you're looking for. But, I, we'd love to come, talk to you and get a little bit more of these numbers, and maybe, you know, usually with our sports complexes and all that, we know how many people park, we know how many people come to games, we know how many grandparents and how many parents come, because the older they get, the, the, it changes, um, based on, uh, you know, the age groups, um, and. And, uh.
Well, just point, the point is that, that it's a, well, that the, that, that this area is, it's a destination, and that's what draws a lot, not only the local.
Yeah, your crossroads here.
But again, yeah, it's, uh, there's just, I'm just, I'm just excited to see that we're gonna just look at it from, from a real wide view, and, and, and the fact that we're gonna, you know, bring everybody together to help us get where we wanna be.
Josh, I think that makes sense.
So, sorry. Uh, well, so you're doing a feasibility study, and that's really what I'm curious about, is is it feasible? Um, does it make sense to pour a bunch of money, uh, into an older location? I am, I am for the pool, and have described my, uh, grandparents' meeting there at the pool, you know, eighty years ago, ninety years ago. So, uh, it, it's, it's important for me, but i- i- if we're looking at designing and, and how to, to make it better, I think, um, I would like to see us, how do you make it old but new? How do we keep the, the look of, of the, uh, what we have, but to bring it into, uh, kind of a, a more up-to-date, uh, look and more modern, but also thinking about where, where we've come from, and what does that land mean, and the WPA that built it, and so forth.
Does, does that mean, when you say old, do, do you want it to still have that historical look, and what's genuine in Napa Sota, or do you want it to have a, do you wanna reskin it, you know, or whatever facility, reskin it in a way that's modern, and, uh, of course, renovate inside? What, are you, are you wanting to hang on to any of the?
Yeah, I'm thinking that, that people come to Napa Sota because we have the historical value, and so, if I could come to Napa Sota and be at a swimming pool that I could go visiting College Station, I don't know that that's really what I would want. Um, but something to, to think about, and what does it cost to do something that looks a little bit older than something that's more modern?
I know, our initial walkthrough, we saw the old building, and as architects, we love to preserve what we can, and it's a pretty neat building.
I think what I've heard from council on multiple occasions is, uh, the, the WPA look of the stones. So, uh, right next, uh, to, uh, Brule Elementary, the rock gym that, that's there, uh, the school district redesigned that and did a lot of remodeling there.
Oh, the fake notes, the football field.
Yes, the football field. And then, I know more recently, is the overpass at, um, at ninety-one oh five right there, uh, by the McDonald's and, uh, Walmart there. If you go under it, you'll see what Tech Dot did to try to replicate the WPA.
And then, um, I believe that that young lady that spoke was talking about how many people come. Um, one of the things that, that we have access to as the city is, uh, we're able to track cell phone use, and so where do people come from, where do they go to? So, we could potentially track who is going to the pool, and are they going to eat, and where are they going to eat, and how long are they staying there? So, I would encourage the city to also have that information available, um, to be able to understand, um, where they're coming from.
Yeah, one, one thing, when, when the Parks Master Plan gets done, sometimes we'll do parks, we'll do, we will do a cost recovery model, and, yeah, parks do not typically generate a lot of revenue, but as you increase, or you renovate a new facility, it needs to, to have some return, uh, on that investment, even if it's twenty-five percent or something, and that means, but it means more amenities and more destination-type facilities where there's a reason to go there, instead of to have a, you know, a community meeting one night or so.
Well, and so that was my next, my next point, is whatever it is that we design, if we could think of it in a way that it's a multi-use, um, so, if you have a pool that's, uh, you know, for, for swimming, is there some other, uh, thing that, that we could use the space for on top of that? And so, I was thinking, you know, wiring for speakers, so that you could have, you know, a movie night, uh, we could work it in with our movie on the lawn, but all of the, the wiring be done at the same time, kinda that sort of.
Yeah. Good point.
Bernie? I mean, felt someone?
Uh, I think we need to keep the capacity for a swimming pool at all costs. Uh, I prefer this one. It, it was built by the WPA and, and, uh, as was so much of the town. And I think from a historical standpoint, uh, our infrastructure was built by the WPA and needs to be part of our, of our history. Uh, the historians, quote, the historians wanna go back further than that, but I think that this is a, the, the biggest item that ties everything together. I don't see a splash pad as a, as an alternate to it, it might be an addition to it, but you get so much more from a swimming pool, both the exercise capability, uh, all of the programs, which some of the people here might not be familiar with, because we let them lapse over the last few years. So, uh, the exercise, the health benefits, I think. I think we need to keep as many of those trees as we can down there, uh, if they could talk.
A lot of stories.
Yeah.
They might know his grandparents.
I know.
Some etch in the tree somewhere.
It's clear they would.
Uh, I don't know how they would fit in, or how we would work around it. And the last thing is, we need parking, uh, by the playground area. I see people there, they're parking on Brule, and that's a, kind of a problematical type thing. So, we have no, no ready parking, other than parking on the south side of the swimming pool and coming around it and down it.
And the, the school is still launched?
For the community.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. If, if it's not in session, yes, sir.
And it, it definitely added a lot, especially for Napa Sota Center.
Yeah, it helps on the Napa Sota Center, but it's up on the, on the southwest corner type thing, so it doesn't have that playground area that much.
And if I could just add one more thing, which is not part of the questionnaire, but, uh, it's really exciting. I, I live over in that area, uh, and I can hear the kids screaming and cheering and having a great time on Saturday mornings, and when I go by, I, I didn't remember how many folks, uh, used the pool, uh, and I didn't live as close as I do now. But, it really is amazing that we have such an awesome amenity right, uh, right there next to everything else, when it's a big piece of property, and so, uh, I think it will be, I'm very interested to find out what you guys find out.
There's nothing like Swedish kids.
Because the location is great. I mean, you don't, you don't have to drive to it. That's what's neat about it. You can ride your bike or walk or.
Bernie, I can just add just one more thing, that the general consensus from all of the people that's here, they love the layout of the pool. It works very well for swim meets, and, and we can, but it does offer, it offers more sitting area, plaza is, is working as well. There's been the, so many positive comments from, from the community that we've worked with.
Good to know. It has a green space around it too, where they can put up their tents and everything for the tents.
Bernie, do you see, uh, an enhancement of, um, slides, um, other, uh, most modern pools are having some kind of, uh, bucket that dumps, dumps water or any of that? I know that wasn't around when you were, you know, when, uh, you and I were growing up. We just hadn't, we just turned the whistle, you know, in anger, but, um, and maybe the rest of you, do you see this as repairing the pool and, and improving the decking and all, maybe some shade structure out there, is the pool state, or do you also see adding some of those amenities?
No, yeah, I'd definitely like to look at those things.
Slides and, you know.
Yeah, adding.
Yes, yeah, as a.
Something more active.
Well, just a, more attraction for the pool.
Yeah, for today's time.
As long as you put them up there and they don't interfere with the, uh, As long as you put them up there and they don't interfere with the, with the setup for the swim meets or something like that, if you're gonna take and put slides all along one end of it, all of a sudden you can't start at that point or something, so I wouldn't wanna take, take away from that capability.
Well, that's where we wanna get the numbers. We wanna know how many people go there that are recreational swimmers versus the number of Navasota people who use it and for lanes. I mean, it's, it's just numbers, you know, and, and then you guys make the decisions about those things, but you can put the slides and all that on the side and the, you know...
I suppose it could even, it could even be a possibility once, if, if the leak is found, where it is, that could possibly be, where it could be expanded.
Yeah, and at the, well, right, I'm, I'm thinking there's a leak and I always go to the pump house, you know, and that doesn't mean that's where the leak is, so I follow.
Well, another thing that would be interesting is that if, what you're talking about, the buckets pouring onto kids or whatever, if it was, had something to do with the train or if it was somehow able to match to what we are marketing here already, that would be a neat, you know, neat thing, and there's people that are coming from out of town just to swim, just to swim, you know? I mean, there was a issue this weekend where a family was upset that they didn't, got here and weren't able to, to actually do it because we were the closest pool for them.
Well, you know, you've got the, the rock and roll history, you've got the, across the street, you know, you've got the statue and the, the little bandstand back in there along the water shed, and these vendors are really good at making a dinosaur or making a guitar, the water shoots out of the headstock maybe, I don't know, you know, so all you gotta do is ask those guys.
So, so as, as our Parks Board member said, I'm always gonna turn to the funding side, so we've gotta make sure that whatever we're doing, that we have the money to maintain whatever we're going to actually put there, and also make sure that the amount and bring it up to the level of the public's expectation, and so whatever that amount's gonna be, Council's very aware that, and made the decision, that Texas Birthday Bash will now be handled by a third party, and we're planning to utilize the funds that we had put into the Texas Birthday Bash, the net funds, into providing these amenities at this location. So, whether it's these funds or additional funds, we have to issue debt, whatever it is, we've gotta make sure that it, it is meeting the, the public's excellent level of expectations. Number two is, as mentioned, state-of-art, we need to bring it up, it needs to be updated, the entire Navasota Center as well as the swimming pool. We're still using keys to get into the doors, which, when you have staff that, you have staff turnover or something happens, then you've gotta rekey those, those are additional costs, ideally move some electronic doors, be a little bit more modernized. Same thing with HVAC, looking at windows, any blinds that could reduce the heat, making sure that they're able, that buildings be able to be cooled and more energy efficient. Our AV system there is horrible, it, we need to look at people that are coming, wanna do presentations there, that we have a good AV system, as well as do this, the aesthetics, make sure it has a look and feel of Navasota, whether it's gonna be the WPA or whether you're gonna have something related to the Blues Capitol or the train theme, that, that's something to be sure to, to look at. As far as we talk about amenities, I, I think council and staff, I know some public, the pool has been a nightmare since I've been here, I've been here two and a half years and it's, it's, it's been a thorn in my side since I've been here. The first year we weren't able to bring it up, the last, last year we were able to get it, it limped across the, the finish line, was able to, Mudcats were able to participate, our public was able to utilize the facility all the way up to Labor Day. This year, we are struggling, electrical issue, pump issues, the, the leak. I don't think a three-hundred-thousand gallon pool is the, is the answer. I think putting some type of aquatics facility, whether it includes lap, lap swim, we, we keep hearing Mudcats need lap, need the, the lap pool portion for whatever the minimum number is for competition, but we also hear from the public that they wanna do lap swim just as, as a wellness program for themselves. But we also need to look into the future because lifeguards are becoming a huge issue just nationwide. I think that the reason we're able to provide lifeguards, thank y'all, I know there's a couple lifeguards in here, thank you for, for doing that, but I think it's because of the Mudcats. If we didn't have the Mudcats here, we probably would not be able to get lifeguards. I know that Houston's experienced all twenty of their pools not open because of lifeguards, I know Brian was able, was unable to open up their pools when they wanted to because of lifeguards. We need to think about the future, what lifeguard situation's gonna be. The other thing is, let's, when we think about the Brule Park, I, I think it's important that we look at a possible accessible playground for all, for, for any needs, any needs children to be able to have a, a place to be able to have a park, and may, whether it's, if this is the location or not, that's to be determined, but we, we, I think the city does need to think about some type of accessible playground. And then, as we talk about wellness, and it's not from aquatic side, but just wellness in general, making use of the bottom rooms on the poolhouse there could be a, a great location for a workout, for either strength and conditioning, weight room, have some place for specific yoga, zumba classes, and, you know, the public, the public, it's, it's whatever the public's gonna want and what we can afford, I think this would come down to. So, whether it's some activity room, whether there's, there's a basketball feature or something, I think those are things to, to consider. So, amenities, bringing it up to date with state-of-art stuff, and then also always remembering about the funding.
Jason, that was about twelve things.
Yeah.
You cheated, you crammed about six into it.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I would like, because we've got one of our, our senior landscape architects here, I'd like Dale maybe to chime in and ask a couple of questions about the, the play area and some of the comments that have been made. Do you have anything you'd like to ask him while you got him? You gotta come up here.
I know. I think just highlighting some of the things that y'all have said and play off of that, I mean, the accessible playground, I mean, that's the way to go, I mean, it's, we have to do it nowadays, and I think you can take that to a next level, rather than just one feature that is ADA accessible, make the whole playground accessible. Driving by the side, it's like, I don't know, landscape guy, right? Who can't get excited when you go by and see all those trees and old trees that are there? We would, you know, I don't wanna do anything to hurt that character, 'cause that gives us a place for shade, for swim teams to set up, to everybody kinda wait between meets, it's wonderful. You know, Charles had mentioned amphitheater, in my mind, I'm running from the pools up here, but my trees are down here, and maybe we can do some really nice transitions between those two spaces, I think that's really exciting. When hearing y'all talk about, I don't wanna call this a central park, but it's, it's a really major feature park for your community, and it ought to get sort of the, the grandness and the notoriety that it deserves, and, you know, with redoing the buildings, looking at ways through the pool, I think you can really create that a focal point, a diamond in the city itself, 'cause it's local for everybody. I'll shut up, I, no, I won't. I love the fact that y'all are on board with the CCC and the WPA, I think that's really unique, it kinda gives us a challenge to, how can we give that look but use modern-day materials and pull that off? I don't think we need to pull out ninety-year-old stonemasons to do it, but we need to somehow think about how we can pull that off aesthetically to keep that character. You know, talking about this town, like a lot of towns we work in, the rail line and railroad is really important, so that kind of a theme, whether it's the playground or that type of thing, could really be nice. I think there's just a lot of possibilities and I'm excited to get into it.
And you don't have any, you, you mentioned, don't go back further than that, you're not talking about going back to the French and the...
La Salle's boat.
Any of that stuff, though, right? Could do that with pool things and all.
Exactly.
Kevin, do you have any architectural questions for clarification right now?
No.
It's close. Here we go.
Ten miles away.
Come, go ahead, no.
Another drill. Questions will probably more, be more forthcoming as we get into this deeper, but I did wanna talk a little bit more, elaborate on what Mark was talking about as far as getting excited about keeping architecture. With a historic community that has a, a personal tie to a structure, we look at it from not just the, the history of what happened there, the place that it has become, but the tectonics of it, the things that make it, the fabric of the architecture, and so we're bringing in new codes and requirements that we need to meet from an energy standpoint or just a fire safety standpoint, they're running, all of that is running through this filter of what I, what we call critical regionalism, is what is relevant, what is consistent with what's already here, a broad community, but particularly for this structure as a historic piece. And as Dale said, it is a very unique challenge because the type of masonry that was used there is very, been, been very intentionally rolled out and not used commonly because everyone likes nice, nice, clean, straight lines, and so it's, it's very exciting to get to engage with that in a way that's going to be relevant, modern, up-to-date, performing in a lifespan that y'all need it to, but from a unique characteristic standpoint too, that makes it a bit more of a, a destination for different user groups, maybe even something that can roll into an evening activity thing that makes people stay overnight. And so the use of that facility, not just in the daytime, which pools, you imagine, are constantly occupied during the day, 'cause you're looking for shade, you're looking for sun, in the, in the water area, but in the evenings, what does that become? So, thinking about the transition into the, the evening for families, what are those activities like? How does it remain safe from a perimeter standpoint on the whole site? What's the, what's the lighting configuration like? Are we, are we creating light pollution in that, in that creek bottom, or is it still quaint and small-town feel, has the, the texture of Navasota to it? And so that's basically how we're gonna be approaching these, the renderings that we're gonna be producing, we'll try to capture that as best we can, they'll have more of a mood to them than a, we'll say, clinical accuracy, and the other things about the, the performance, the AV systems and electrified hardware, those things will be more captured, I think, in the OPC, the, the, the data points that proof out this facility, so.
Very good. Okay, we got some staff that made notes too. They gave thumbs up to the pour-in-place and the all-access play structures, playgrounds, but who wants to start?
Speaking of... Wonderful. So, people keep coming, so if we can keep that... Make sure that the water doesn't stay up tight with all the people coming and I'm trying to keep this area as good as possible. I do see it. Sorry?
Anything we do, anything you do... You automatically trigger all these things, including the energy code and, and everything. A good comment, though.
And I would just say, I agree that what we have there is great, um, safe for everyone. And then keeping that pool running. And understanding that we are a small town, um, I'm not speculating, we just, we're a small town, so, I mean, um, my last question is, how far out, which I know Jason knows he worries.
That's what I'm gonna say. Everybody's talking about. Eventually, this is the library looking. And also the shade trees that everybody's talking about, we have a lot of borders in town, I don't know if people realize. And we have been...
You're so right, a hundred and sixty acres the last two summers, very shallow kids. They're all good.
Good observation.
Krista?
Complex for maintenance when we talk about... To add... And your current... Second floor.
Um, council, and do you want to have comments from the public, or is this a public forum? Or is this a...
I'll let the, I'll let council decide, but I, I do want us to, if you could highlight, in, in the scope of work, you talked about public engagement, if you could at least let the council, the parks, and the public understand about what that's gonna look like in the future for public engagement for that?
Jason, real quick, did Lupe and Mike have...
Oh, I'm sorry, Lupe, did y'all have anything you wanted to add to it?
Uh, yeah, we were...
Okay.
Uh, no, no worries. Whistle it?
But there'll be other concepts that are shown, but you will have, at some point, you'll have a draft version of all this and we'll wait for your comments and we'll make a discussion to talk to, how the master plan and the narrative and all that, based on the comments that staff give us and, and counsel.
One of, and my last question, on the, on the dressing rooms upstairs on, on the west end of the pool, what if that second tower is just eliminated and, and make like a flat roof or something?
You mean demo out the second floor?
Yes.
Is that what you mean?
Yes.
Uh, I, I...
Well, we, uh, we'll look, we'll look at every option as far as what we can do or can't do and study that. We haven't been upstairs or inside because we, at the first walk-in...
I went through there, but, but just to hit the rooms and...
Right.
But it's, it's, uh, you know, it all gets down to the assessment and, and the roof. I think that if it's serviceable, you know, personally, I think you'd want to make some use of it for meeting space or, or something.
Well, I'm just thinking that since we're talking about park, if we can eliminate that top portion of it and putt-putt golf or something up on the roof or something.
Uh, you know, there's always green roofs and putt-putt golf and...
Yeah.
You know, gathering, of course, as, I believe it's Kristin that brought up that there's, there's a need for either an exterior lift or elevator, you know, we'll have to look into the...
It just depends on what, what facilities go on the second floor as far as accessibility goes. We'll have to study that and incorporate that, but the idea of putt-putt, that's new. I mean, but it, those are the kind of things we, we're going to be gathering that, you know, you triggering things in our head that we weren't thinking about. That's kind of, could be kind of cool. As a landscape architect, what do you think about that? More fun, huh?
My first date was putt-putt golf in Bryan when I was like 15 and went to the Baskin-Robbins right next door and putt-putt golf, and you don't see the little ones anymore like that. That's a big deal to... That's in Bryan, you guys kind of...
Another, the other question that, Jason, you were asking is about community engagement. Well, we'll look for you and Christine, Christine and other people to point us a direction, who y'all would like us to talk to. We know who we'd recommend talking to for this type park, but y'all will give us some of that direction. And then we, Charles, you may want to embellish a little bit how we go through the different processes.
We'll do, you're going to get better, first of all, community engagement is, is not usually, not generally highly successful in communities. For one, a lot of the times, lots of time when it's the, the venue, people don't always feel comfortable coming to a government building to give their public input, feels a little off. We like to catch people at pop-up events, at, at an event that they may be having already, like a, you know, a fall festival or a, you know, a summer event where children are there too, and you catch people kind of as they're already attending something and then they're happy to talk to you about that. In those kind of events, we like to use visual preferences where we'll put up all kinds of, of images of things and let them take stickers and put dots on that. That's one way of doing it. On the public, on the, when we do the online survey, that's where you get a lot more input if it's publicized properly. You get more input, cross-section, and you can stratify it better where you can really see what the percentages really are instead of just the people who show up for a public meeting being able to speak their own. Usually, a lot of times, those meetings are people who have concerns or they have a dog in the fight, so to speak, about something they're passionate about, and that's good too, but you can't really tell how to weigh that. Whereas online parks, it's not, it shouldn't be independent, but both of those going together is really good. But on the online survey, we don't ask questions like, would you like an indoor swimming facility? We will ask, where do you, you know, where do you record, you mentioned about the phone, being able to track where people are coming from, where they go and, and all that. Well, on the survey, we want to know where do people play, you know, where do they come from, what, what top five things they, they drank, a list of things. And usually, number one, at just about every city you go to, number one is, is trails, capacity, walkability, connection. Now, we're talking about the, the kind of parks, the overview of parks and master plan. But in this, in this sense, if you say would you like to keep it swimming, you can, you can, you can, uh, over sample, buy all the people, talking to their neighbors and saying, hey, everybody wants to go to the ice, or vice versa. We have a different census, we did a row house that was stalls and, 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 and there was a row, there were two row cars close to it, and there's not that many people, but we got so many to chime down on, row facility. And the question was, do you want to, the question was, do you row? And we got so many answers, no, we don't row, but we really want a row facility. You know, you start, the way you word those things are really important so that you get real, real data that, that fits your field really, really long, but it also isn't, it kind of, it's sort of, the city wants to offer up because you have limitations, obviously, the streets to deal with, the water treatment, I mean, you could have lit many things that are budget sessions. Right now, I'm sure we've got a decision to make, so, so it's important for us to work on the issue, and actually, so...
Just something to point out that I don't think, you know, earlier you mentioned trails. Now, I don't know if you're aware, but that, that park is actually connected to a complete trail system in the community. It goes one direction, it connects to a couple of other parks and a direction next to it.
So that's, that's what's neat about that location. Been down all of that, in fact, you know, what, 12, 13 years ago. But, and that, that's, that's great. And that's why I keep hearing, you know, a term like gathering, there's so much that this park seems to be more of a gathering space than I, I thought. You don't have a lot of, you have some walkable places, but obviously horse certainly isn't. You gotta, can't get out there riding your bike, I guess some people could. So, but yeah, trails are, are high up there. Also, the, the climbing walls, playgrounds, they're, that separate older children that still need playgrounds from the little ones, separating those. It seems simple, like, but, but, and security, being able to see, have sidelines where you can do whatever you're doing, whether it's a ballpark or otherwise, and see your kids go into the restroom and back. And, but that'll all depend on whether the pool house stays there or not because you'll still need restrooms and changing rooms and all that. You don't need, you don't need necessarily showers and could be limited, but...
I hear, I hear a lot of concern about making this attractive for people coming into town and the economic benefits and everything else. I want to make sure that we don't overlook the main purpose of having this, which is for our citizens and, and for their, for their level of activities. We haven't mentioned anything about water safety. One reason we don't have lifeguards, in, in my estimation, is that these kids don't know how to swim well enough to, to qualify. They get to be teenagers without, having had a program available to them on water safety or lifeguarding.
WSI training, but you're talking just literally swimmers don't know how to swim. Now, those, that goes to your programs that the Parks Department or Parks, the oversaw, being overseen, whatever staff is involved in that, what programs are available. And we'll, we'll check into that. So do, do you want any two-minute comments at all or is this closed? Is this not a public...
Well, this, this was a kickoff for, for council and there's...
We can allow the...
There's going to be lots of opportunities.
They have their opportunities, lots of opportunities.
So if anybody wants to go home today, want to issue any, any comments, you could email me at jweeks, W E E K S, at navasotatx.gov. J W E E K S at navasotatx.gov. Put in the, the heading, Park Study, and then I'll make sure that gather all that, share it with council, share it with the Parks Board as well as share it with the consultants. And again, there'll be a lot of opportunities for public engagement. The city itself might be able to try to put out some type of survey as well through Flash Vote. So if you're not signed up for Flash Vote, please go to our website on the homepage and, and sign up for Flash Vote. That's not only for this type of circumstance, but for other surveys. We did our initial survey a couple, about two months ago, and so that was very successful. Definitely a way to, to get it out there, and they're short, four to five questions. So be sure to sign up for Flash Vote.
And what we'll be doing next is we'll be getting together with, with you and Kristin and staff to pick some dates that are good and suggest those so that we can have a first public engagement meeting. And also where we can meet with staff also, we're going to take these, these comments and kind of start with some preliminary programming. And we'll get, get together with you and go over that summary so we have some direction as to how to start narrowing things down, but then we'll also get together to get, get the keys to the, to the buildings and be able to do some serious walkthrough, take our ladder and listen to that and, 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 but handle the roof. But that will come, any guys have any questions more, more for us, just?
Will we only be able to get you this conversation electronically? We have an open forum press to speak.
Just describe that there's going to be public engagement meetings. That's what he was just talking about?
Yeah.
So there will be plenty of those opportunities as well as, as well as online.
It could end up being, a lot of times what we like to do is get everybody, wherever the facility is, great place, we did that many years ago, you guys, Bergy and Bernie certainly remember that. But where we'll set up tables and we'll put four, five people at a table, at every table to kind of moderate. We'll put drawings on the table of aerial photographs with markers and pens and tracing paper and... So they can talk to their neighbors and, and we'll, we'll bring up a number of questions for you to engage in. And that's always your expectation, is you're getting to solve problems together. It really is. So yes, you can...
You know, I mean, what we've done before, we, like I said, Charles said we're getting these groups, but each group is sort of, each is like its own little, that table to discuss. And then at the end, they, we pick a, a citizen to go up and, and give the, the information that this table ideas they had. So we kind of, it's purely collaborative in nature to help establish our goals. Because we're, we're looking for y'all's input as much as we are the council or the staff.
It's one of the few, these kind of things that I actually can tolerate.
Of course. You'll have, I'm sure you'll have a couple of weeks. And it'll be like a, I mean, like a ledger size to stick in storefronts, so, you know, public meeting, and staff will put it out. They may do it on their water bill, all kinds of different ways, but we'll get together. Michael, you were going to...
Yeah, I just have a question, you know, goes back to the funding because that's the foundation for making this all work. Do you both have a program or put programs together to approach both corporations locally that's part of Texas, support businesses to help sponsor some of this needed funding to accomplish these goals?
Well, there's two different types of that. One is usually corporations, banks, all that, they want to sponsor the ball fields, naming rights to those type of venues, et cetera. When you're talking about maybe a pool, you might get some bank to help sponsor some of that, but for smaller renovations and all, you're talking then about an angel investor or not investor, but a contributor like that. But most commercial donations are for naming rights when they get some credit for it, too. They want to help, but, and, and we're not real fans actually of, of a paver or a bench or this kind of thing because that can kind of get ticky tacky out there where you've got so many of those little things out there. They, they can be very nicely done if you've got a large enough area, but we do have, Texas Parks and Wildlife is a great one. I think Texas Dermatological Society, the, the doctors in Texas are very good about shade sales because they want to avoid, you know, skin cancer. There's other professional groups like that, potentially.
If, if, what is it? If a part of the mindset of making this succeed, you know, and that's the funding, and Jason will tell you that, that's paramount.
Most of the people that are contributing want to know, what's it going to cost? What's it going to have in it? How does it benefit the community? And is it going to be run properly? Is it going to be what you say it's going to be?
Sure.
You know, it's like, sometimes...
It's when I invest my dollars into advertising program to promote the...
and, 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 and,[1353.12]